Welcome everyone this evening. Great to see a good number of representatives from the community engagement today. If you would, please stand and let's say the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda? All in favor? All right, public comment. Good evening. We're getting ready to open up public comment. If we're here with a group and we have similar topics, points, can we please send a representative to state those comments to the panel before we start? With that being said, do we have a sign up sheet for? Okay. Since we do not have a sign up sheet, can I have someone that wants to stand up and give us comments? Make sure, give us your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Glenn Baker. I live in 110 Northeast 16th Street. Good afternoon and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm here today because I support protecting our trees, but I also believe the vegetation ordinance needs common sense built into it, and it needs to be written in a way that residents can understand without needing to be experts in land use formulas. Currently, the ordinance requires homeowners to meet a tree calculation based on inches of trunk diameter per square foot or lot size. In theory, this sounds reasonable. In practice, it has created confusion and frustration because the language is technical and difficult to interpret. Most residents have no idea what one inch of DBH per 220 square feet of lot area means in real life terms. I want to be very clear, this is not an argument against trees. This is an argument for clarity, fairness, and common sense. With that in mind, I respectfully ask the town to consider the following adjustments to Chapter 32. Extend consistency and standards. Under Section 32.761, Paragraph D, apply the first and second row tree standard to the third row from 40th Street East to the west end of the island. Number two, remove unnecessary spacing requirements. Under Section 32.76.4, reduce the minimum distance between planted trees from 10 feet to three feet. Or eliminate spacing requirements entirely. Small lots cannot comply otherwise. Count younger trees toward the total. Under Section 32.75.1, Paragraph A, or parentheses, A, parentheses, 3, reduce the minimum DBH of existing trees that can be counted from five inches to three. Allow understory trees to contribute meaningfully. Add language permitting up to one-third of the required total DBH to be met with understory trees. As long as they are actual trees and not shrubs. Create a reasonable standard for previously cleared lots. For lots with fewer than 10 inches of existing DBH, allow replanting at one-inch DBH per 400 square feet of lot area. This fairly addresses lots that were previously cleared under old standards. And finally, please make the ordinance understandable. Residents should not need to interpret engineering measurements or formulas to determine compliance. The ordinance should clearly state, trees are only required when the footprint of the house changes. We can maintain a healthy tree canopy and still treat residents with fairness and respect. We can protect the island and use common sense at the same time. Thank you for listening and for your service to our community.
Okay.
I am Margaret Johnson, 1716 West Dolphin, also Chair of the EAC. I'm here to request that we consider more trees rather than fewer trees, of course. Yesterday, one of our members, who's a horticulturist, and I worked with one of your members to make some revisions to the suggestions, which remove the spacing requirement so there can be more clustering, which takes, removes a lot of the onerous of planting a lot more bigger trees, and also considering understory trees. So I would advise you and recommend, please, to consider that. I'm not here to regale the merits of trees. We've done that all along. You know, they produce oxygen, store carbon, they have shade, they provide shade, beauty, improve the quality of life, but they also help towards stormwater management, fragile habitat protection, and other things that are vital to this island. We live in a community. It is a beach community, as you know. So beach communities have to have special considerations. I just want to address this HOA malarkey language that we're hearing. I understand people might feel that way, but that's not really fair because this island has a lot of special requirements because we are a coastal community. My property, I can do what I want to. I understand that and agree with that to a degree, but we also have to recognize that we live in a group community. A couple of years ago, I wrote an article for the State Court Pilot about people who were complaining about paying for the beach sand tax because they didn't live, you know, south of the Davis Canal. I want to read two paragraphs because I had done a lot of research from some sociologists about what we consider about being in a community. Every decision is ultimately one based on self-interest, but understanding how individual self-interest is dependent on cooperation with one neighbor's, whether next door, next county, or the ocean distinguishes it from selfishness. True self-interest requires cooperation and awareness of our interdependence. Consider only our self-interest without regard for our neighbors, and the good of the whole is to live in false tranquility rather than communal harmony. And self-centeredness engenders self-interest, which becomes larger than just oneself and the achievement of goals, personal and the larger community. I think these are well-spoken words that we need to consider when we're talking about what we need to do for posterity. I'll leave two words with you, posterity, you know what that means. The other one is climacteric. That's not climactic, because climactic is important, but climacteric means long-reaching objectives and goals, and that's what we need to consider when we're talking about what we're going to do about our trees. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have someone else?
I'm Carol Lind Candillaria from 301 Northeast 42nd State, and I've lived here for about 35 years, and I've seen a lot of councils and planning boards and things, and y'all have done a good job with this tree preservation ordinance. I remember back in the day before the town had its own adopted tree program, and our chairman, planning board here, and grandson, we planted that tree named Teresa right there at the corner of the employee parking lot, right there across 46th Street, and Cameron watered that thing by hand. And now our tree manager has each tree being watered. Our town is taking responsibility for that, and I have to say, I see a lot of success in the preservation of larger trees on the newer developing lots. I have to say that, that a lot of what you have done has had the intended effect. So I know now, the second phase of our town is the redevelopment of our lots. Our people here want to improve their spaces. We want to encourage our green businesses to come to a beautiful place. We're looking into the 4045 to see how we can do this. Now is the time for us to make sure that these things that we're putting in have the intended effect. What is it? The intended effect, according to our program, it says, maintain and enhance property value trees. Preserve and enhance the visual appearance of the town trees. Preserve unique and productive coastal habitats. That's our whole habitat there, pure water. Reduce the impact of development on the town's stormwater system. What a beautiful way to do that, that we're doing. Reduce the cost of those improvements we're going to have to make by using what we have here and our partnerships with our universities, our partnerships with our community, our new programs that, education for our, look at that, education. Bryce has a beautiful education thing set up on December the 12th for all the contractors and everybody to sign up to come. It's free lunch at the 801, where you can come and hear about all of the ordinances that are in place now. And I just want to thank you all very much for your work, planning board, for what you're doing now.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Jim Angel. I live at 1605 Swain Drive. I've sent an email to each of you outlining my thoughts, and I hope that you've had an opportunity to read it. As property owners, we take subject to certain restrictions on our property and have certain obligations to our neighbors. There are zoning restrictions, there are setbacks, there's rights of way, things of that. The vegetation ordinance is just another one of those. It does not improperly affect the property rights of owners. We live in a community. We have an obligation to each other to keep stormwater to a minimum, and this, God knows this, town has stormwater problems. Trees help with that. They help beautify the town. They bring people here. Instead of a barren landscape, as you see on some of the islands that are south of here, we have a wonderful tree canopy here, and I hate to see it diluted. The idea that you would reduce the requirement from 22, 220 square feet, rest, the BTH, one inch per 220 square feet, to 300 square feet, just doesn't make sense in terms of the objectives that this young lady pointed out that the statute is supposed to do. This town is a very political town. You can, we're in an election year. You can tell it by the street signs, and if you get on Facebook, you can see the dialogue that's going on about these issues and other issues. This planning board could submit to the town council something that would allow trees to be cleared from the lots at a lower, at a greater rate than has previously taken place, but that's just where we are in this swing. If the political pendulum swings back the other way, then you may find people who are having to plant trees because they took them out during this swing. I think that the requirement on the books now is reasonable. I agree with, there should be clarity. I'm not sure that the new rules provide that clarity. And I do not have a problem, and I believe that there should be no requirement for the vegetation study if there's no expansion of the improvements on the lot. Thank you for your time.
My name is David Merkel. I live at 236 Northeast 34th Street. Not going to get into the technical parts of it, I have read it, but I just wanted to remind the board that this town has made many commitments over a number of years to preserving the tree canopy, and I think we've had some mixed results from all of that. This was, this current Chapter 32 ordinance, I think was a real good attempt to try to solve the problems of loss of tree canopy. But just thinking about the commitment that's been made, and it's in your budget for this coming year, the budget proposal to preserve the canopy, and it was in the 2045 plan, and it was in the long-range plan prior to the 2045 plan. Right outside this room, you can walk across the floor, and you can see the town seal. Town seal has two trees on it and a waterfront. So there's been a lot of commitment, a lot of consideration over a long period of time, and I just hope that the council, or the board, excuse me, will take into account all that sentiment over a long period of time and also make a prudent decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else with different points?
Say one thing, if I'm allowed.
You'll need to come up.
I did forget to say that it would be great to make relief for that gentleman and those parcels that don't have trees. I thought that idea that Matt had about having a separate, just a separate clause, and you only need a permit if you're going to have, add impermeable surface to the place. If you're just going to put something, why should you have to have a permit? You know, I mean, I cut trees all the time in my yard. People shouldn't have to have a permit just to cut, you know, something in their yard. I'm saying we should leave, make sure they need a permit for heritage trees because those are the ones that we're trying to really protect, and our, why saddle our code enforcers? I mean, it just seems onerous for our people to have to get all these permits all the time when all we're trying to do is preserve our vegetation, our mature trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? I have a motion to close out public comment.
No move.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Matt's done.
Thought that was the gavel for being done.
So I just have a handful of slides to go over with you guys today with the planning board. You should also have a little handout of kind of some of the outstanding issues we're going to talk about. So I do think for the purposes of clarity, since we're taking this to the town council in just a couple of weeks, when we do get to the voting stage, if we could kind of vote in order of those handouts, kind of one issue at a time, that would certainly be helpful for us when we go to draft any of these recommendations for the town council, so, before we get started there. I won't belabor the background of this issue very much. As you know, the planning staff made a recommendation to the board. The board had a couple of recommendations for adjustment before it went to town council. We've been asked to receive some additional feedback from the community on this particular issue. So a couple of outstanding issues to try to make a determination on, under the current recommendations, is whether to adjust the required DBH per square foot, and if so, how? I think we've heard some feedback about, you know, lots that are kind of devoid or have very little DBH today. Staff's original recommendation was to take into consideration when there's an addition being added to a property or an accessory building versus a new build. The minimum DBH for retained trees to be credited was an issue. The current ordinance requires a five-inch DBH tree in order to be counted. Certainly, there are likely some smaller trees on the lot that are viable that aren't meeting that requirement, so should that adjustment be made. Whether to allow a certain amount of understory trees to count towards the total DBH, it's a little bit of an outstanding issue. I just want to make sure that everybody's in agreement on that before we move forward to town council. Beachfront second and third row requirements, the planning board recommended, you know, from, I believe from 40th Street West, to have the third row in those areas exempted. Whether there's a spacing requirement for new plantings, the current ordinance does require 10-foot spacing between newly planted trees, as well as structures and things like that, so need to kind of decide on whether that still makes sense under the revised ordinance or the current ordinance even. How to structure fines was an issue. Statutes and case law point us towards a maximum fine of $500 for a civil penalty. I know the planning board discussed increasing that to some degree. The staff has looked at a structure wherein you could issue a fine to the property owner, and if a company is doing the work, potentially the company as well. So certainly, that would raise the total fees. Now, collecting fines from a potentially out-of-town company would be a difficulty on our part, but that's for us to work through as the town staff, should the planning board want to go in that direction. There was some discussion about how much diameter breast height to retain or plant in the front setback area, as well as what the kind of final native plant material list should look like. We've heard some feedback about multi-stem trees, species such as not the dwarf, but the full-size tree, crepe myrtles, things like that. And I will point out, it's in your agenda packet, but staff has had a chance to meet with a couple of arborists who showed us on those multi-stem trees, how to actually get the DBH when it branches out prior to, so for existing trees that are on site, we should have some methodology to count the DBH on that, to help in that as well. Couple other things that are included in your agenda packet that the board might consider for strategies here, you know, whether to allow a full-size, you know, a multi-stem tree at planting, as long as it's not a dwarf or a shrub species. Is there a one-time exemption? I know we talked about that a little bit through the course of this, of whether, you know, one-time additions or additions within a certain period might somehow be exempt from the Chapter 32 requirements. A reduced calculation for lots with little to no existing trees, so way back when, I've done a little bit of deep diving on the history of this ordinance. It's after 2018 when the town included a requirement that if you didn't have trees on a lot, you would have to plant to the minimum amount. So prior to that, it's not without precedent, I guess I'm saying, to have a lower requirement for a lot that, for whatever reason, didn't have a lot of trees on it to begin with. Once again, looking at the list of approved trees, one thing the board could consider is expanding the fee-in-lew option. Currently, we have a 30% fee-in-lew, where those towns are, or those funds are collected by the town, and those are specifically earmarked. We cannot use them for anything other than tree planting and tree maintenance in public spaces. The town's done a great job over the last few years of being able to plant trees on public roads that the town owns and maintains or in public parks, and we're not in any danger in the near future of running out of roads or spaces for where we can plant trees. So certainly, an interesting option to give some relief to the property owner potentially as well as still maintain that canopy if we can, you know, continue to plant those trees in public spaces. And then finally, I believe you've heard a couple of comments here tonight about, you know, the potential of requiring Chapter 32 compliance when you're adding impervious surface, so, you know, that would be a pretty simple modification. It requires that with a building permit now, you could add a clause that, with a building permit, that adds impervious surface to the lot, or expands the footprint or something like that, could be considered in order to have some small relief for smaller projects. I did want to go through kind of a couple of planting and retention examples. I did just a handful of scenarios. I'll be frank, the variables are almost limitless, you know, house size, structure, stormwater placement, utilities placement on the lot, how much actual impervious surface you're putting on the lot, kind of go a long way. So, you know, certainly, any of these could be kind of adjusted. But the first one is a 60, these are all in 6,600 square foot lots, so pretty standard lot here in the town. We do have some larger ones in different areas, of course, but in this instance, have a 625 square foot driveway, so that is scaled out to the maximum width driveway that you can put here on the town. Those dashed lines that you see are the setback line, so you've got a front, rear, side setback on there, and the little asphalt-colored spot is the driveway. A 2,250 square foot impervious surface for the structure, that's about 35% impervious. The ordinance allows up to 45%, so if you were doing 45% impervious, in this scenario, you'd be looking at, if you did a regular concrete driveway and the house, you'd be at about 45%, but if you did a pervious driveway, you could basically fill up the building envelope with impervious and be at that 40, 45% requirement. So what we have here is just, if you didn't have any trees on your lot and you had to just plant only. Sometimes I don't understand it either, it's fine.
I did, really.
So at a one-inch DBH per 220 square foot, this is what the ordinance requires now. If you had to plant, that'd be 15 two-inch trees at a 10-foot spacing. So each of those little green dots with a slightly different shading is a tree with a five-foot bubble around it, basically. So that's your, if the bubbles don't overlap, you got a 10-foot spacing there. I did make sure that it was 10 feet from the footprint of the structure here. What this kind of illustrates is a couple of things. One, the spacing kind of requires you to move up into the side yard setbacks in order to meet all the planting requirements. And when you get into the side yard setbacks, the side yard setback's only eight feet, right, and you have a 10-foot spacing requirement from the edge of the building. So if your building is on that side yard setback, you basically can't plant any new trees in the side yard setback under that ordinance construction. So just kind of showing that, in this instance, those trees are, you know, the building is pulled back off of the side yard setbacks, and those trees are about as close as I could get to the side yard property line in order to meet that 10-foot spacing requirement there. Now, we hear a lot about stormwater and utility requirements. I looked at a handful of stormwater plans. Sometimes they do go into the side yards or into the front yards. When they're in the side yards, they typically run about five or 10 feet, you know, on either side of the building. A lot of times, what we're seeing now, though, is stormwater placement under the driveway, which is an innovative approach to kind of save space, probably due in part to the fact that we're, you know, planting trees and you don't want the trees to grow roots into your stormwater detention facility, so. So all that, I did speak with the chief building official about kind of what requirements there are for the utility line, so like the water, sewer, electrical, things like that. Once again, a bunch of variables there. You might have an easement running along the back of the property where your, you know, electrical line is run, but there is, there's not a width requirement for that, so there's not a space apart that they have to be. And we see several builds where they come in with a four-inch trench and dig that out and basically stack vertically because there's a vertical spacing requirement instead of a horizontal, and it's likely to save space on the lot, too. You don't have to build, dig a, you know, five, 10-foot trench and kind of lay them all out horizontally if you can stack them up vertically. So we have been seeing some of that as well. Now, what if you have a couple of decent-sized trees that you want to retain on your property, right? The ordinance does credit trees that are retained on property. So we did here, same calculation, same building's footprint, one per 220 square feet. In this instance, a couple of nine-inch DBH trees in the backyard, then you've only got a handful of trees to plant in the front yard. Makes the spacing a lot easier. And certainly, something that was talked about when this was updated in 2024 was how to, you know, incentivize people to retain these decent-sized trees in their yard. The ordinance prior to that really just required a set number of trees and didn't give any credit towards the larger tree that you're retaining. So in the end, it kind of incentivized the maximum building site and then to replant because we're just, you know, strictly looking at the number of trees on the property. So a little bit better site configuration here if you're retaining a handful of trees. But that being said, the trees aren't always this nicely spaced if you're retaining a tree on your property. But that being said, the trees aren't always this nicely spaced if you're retaining a tree on your property. You know, these are kind of evenly spaced in the backyard. Sometimes they're, the tree you want to save is in the middle of the lot and you just don't have an option to save it. So the planning board had recommended 1-inch per 300 square foot. So we did a planting-only example here, same layout, all the same structure sizes. That would reduce it down to 11 trees at a 10-foot spacing. So you can see there, gets away from the crowding of the driveway, you know, gets out of the crowding of the side yard setback. But similar spacing and everything there. And that being said, that being said, if you retain a couple of trees under that instance, you only have to plant two. So a much lower, you know, requirement from terms of if you're, have a couple of decent-sized trees that you're retaining, you might not have to do any planting under a scenario like that. So I just wanted to kind of walk you through those so you can get a little bit of a visual illustration of what some of these policy decisions look like and how they can affect a property. Like I said, the variables are kind of infinite when it comes to site configuration and things like that. So fortunately, we can't drill down into every hypothetical situation. We really have to kind of try to find the best fit for the most people that we can. So that being said, that's all I had in terms of presentation for today. You know, we've kind of covered those outstanding issues and some potential other strategies. You guys should all have a little bit of a kind of worksheet to follow through in here. So of course, the board, feel free to, you know, discuss as needed. But I would recommend that we kind of vote on items individually just so we can keep track of, you know, what the majority of the board votes on as far as a recommendation.
Matt? Did you have some people from the extension office here today to answer some questions?
I did ask, I don't know if I I'm right here.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing up, appreciate it. And he was nice enough to send over, you have in your packet, a coastal native species list. He was nice enough to send that over as well. So hopefully you had a chance to look at that. But yeah, I think if you guys want to, you know,
Could they come up if we wanted some questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Good afternoon, how are you guys? Matt Colligan, I'm the natural resource agent for Brunswick, New Hampshire and Pender Counties. And Matt had reached out about some resources, including recommended native species for urban and suburban spaces. And glad to share that information and hopefully you guys have that in front of you. But yeah, what are some of your questions?
Some of the questions, we're looking at considering as far as like clustering trees, cutting back the distance as far as your viewpoints, what's the feedback on that?
Well, you know, I've been hearing some great comments today. Let's just start with trees are great stormwater control measures by themselves. And they certainly are more likely to survive if you can keep them in a stand in a group of trees and as opposed to individual trees. There is a lot to be said, though, for planting new small-growth trees. They tend to grow a lot faster and stay healthier longer as opposed to planting like a 15-gallon tree just to get it in there. Sometimes it's better just to go with a smaller tree because it will grow into its place in a more resilient way. You know, and you've got a lot of challenges with a coastal environment, you know, everything from salt spray and potential inundation. So a big part of the recommended species that we look at, take that into account. And some of the resources, too, that I've shared with Matt come from our Coastal Landscapes Initiative, which is a part of our Sea Grant sister agency. And there's some, just some great resources about what plants will do well, especially on these barrier islands and coastal communities. So please take a look at that. Something that often gets overlooked, too, are soil types. I know probably here, you know, three rows and on the island is, you've got mostly xeric sand conditions. But it can vary, you know, significantly, especially across the whole county. But just keeping that in mind about plant selection and maybe even, you know, development dead cities when you're looking at hydric soils, really wet soils. I'm not as familiar with how much of that is in Oak Island. But all those should really inform your decision about your tree retention. But I went all over the place there.
Follow-up and one other question.
Sure.
You was talking about the smaller size actually does better than the bigger
As far as getting established, sometimes if you plant a really big, you know, like a 15-gallon tree, you know, it's already starting behind. It's got established roots to keep that canopy going. But we see smaller tree installs, bare-root installs, they can, they can often surpass the rate of growth and live longer just because they have more time adapting to that native soil, so.
And the time of year, awesome.
Yeah, time of year, absolutely, yeah. We're getting into, you know, the dormant season, the late, late fall, winter is a great time to be planting trees, so. And in fact, tomorrow, if y'all are in Leland, they're giving away 800 free native trees at the Leland Cultural Arts Center there, so 9 to 12, first come, first served. I am not sure, it's being put on by the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees and I don't think there is a residential requirement, so. So get in there, you know, put on a different hat, get in line. That's right, that's right.
Board members, any questions about what you've looked at to get some advice?
Not right this second, go ahead if you want.
The varieties that you recommended and we added, are they readily available to purchase?
Yes, on the back sheet, I think I have, there's local nurseries on there, but I do have a separate list of native nurseries, mostly across North Carolina and some South Carolina. But yeah, the species on that are, it's not a comprehensive laundry list of all native plants. It was intentional that those plants are available and you can find them. Good question, though.
Okay. Reese?
I'm fine right now.
I've got two questions for Matt.
Go ahead, Mark.
We'll get him up in a minute.
Okay.
One, I want to thank you. The answer about the space, it was very key, the size of the trees planted is. Second question, as far as we're looking at counting DBH toward the requirements of already trees on the lot. We've got like 2 inches that we're saying is like a good standard now. But if we had a 2-inch already on the lot, would that be a more viable tree than a 2-inch that we're planting?
If it's, if it's in the ground and it's happy, that's
That's a more viable tree than a new 2-inch that we're looking to plant.
You know, everything depends. And like Matt was saying, there's infinite situational conditions, so. But if it's growing there and if it's healthy and established, yeah, I would, you know, it's definitely better to keep it and not cut it down and plant something new. I'm just, as far as like, if you're buying new plant material to repopulate, it might be better savings on the cost to not get the biggest trees you can find, but get ones that will grow quicker and be healthier in the long run.
Very good. I do want to say we do have Dural with us now via video. Welcome, you just missed the presentation, so. And your sound is off. We cannot hear you. Very good, since we don't have any questions, I want to say thank you for showing up.
My pleasure, and if you have more questions, I'll leave my
And thank you for the tree list, that's very helpful.
Wonderful, well, thanks for taking a look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, we've got some more questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
The first one is just for clarity, Matt, on page four of our packet.
Yes, sir.
For planning board recommendations. So it's top move, possibly adding that third row, that says east of southeast 40th.
That's a typo, it's intended to be west, yes, sir.
Okay, just want to verify that.
All just for that.
And then on page 61, just a general note, under 32-79, tree preservation. It references the tree removal permit there. And I just wanted to say, you know, it's a pretty short list that it shows of what's needed there. Personally, myself, trying to utilize that, I find it to be more detailed information. So I think that really doesn't cover the scope of what a person has to go through in filling out an application. I mean, I would think there's, you know, four to seven items that I'm, lines I'm filling out and that's it. But it's a lot more to it, so.
Am I under C, is that?
What's that?
Under subsection C for the tree removal permit?
Yeah, under four, yeah, mine doesn't actually have a C, but, well, oh, yeah, it does, yeah, C. Yes, it would be, page 62 is a continuation of it, that's what I was looking at. But yes, all of that, I mean, I just don't think it really encompasses, if I was looking at this and saying, this is what I need. I know I found myself having to stop and go research information and go take pictures and go get measurements, that I don't think it really covers all that in there. And kind of going along with that, I know we're just kind of getting into the meat of this, but I know we heard from some of the public speaking. And I have continuously heard from people recently about, they feel this is too complicated. This, you know, one of them used a reference of, if I was a builder and I needed to know the building code, you would expect I know the building code. But if I just want to take a tree out of my yard, you know, it's all of this, I need a calculator, I need to do all of these things, and then I question, do I even have it right? Because I've never done it before and there's a lot of numbers and some numbers are, you know, different than other numbers for the different categories. So just wanted to say that in general, that I've gotten a lot of feedback about how complicated it is and difficult to understand
Yeah, absolutely.
From the general public. That's all I have right now.
Very good. So let's take up topic one.
Let me, let me ask you this question. Matt?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. If I get a letter, a letter from my insurance company that says, I don't cut this tree down,
Yeah.
they're going to cancel my insurance. Let's say it's a heritage tree. Am I going to run into a problem the way this is written that I'm going to lose my insurance because I can't cut down a tree?
They say the criteria for tree removal permit issuance includes trees that are injured or in danger of falling close to or to existing or proposed structures. So if there's a tree that's in danger of falling onto a proposed structure, then we can certainly take a look at that and determine whether it can be removed or not based on that determination.
Okay, now, I work in risk management for an insurance company. Just because it might not be falling, they might say it's too close to the house, they're not going to insure my house unless I cut the tree down. So unless it meets those specific things, I can't cut the tree down and I'm going to lose my insurance.
Well, sir, I think you're, once again, we're talking about infinite hypotheticals here.
I mean, this is happening
If someone brings us a letter from their insurance saying that a tree is a danger to their property and needs to be taken down, I can assure you that we'll take a look at that permit and make a determination from there.
Okay, but it does not explicitly say that here, correct?
It does not explicitly say that a third-party determination of the danger of a tree from an insurance company is grounds for removal of the tree, yes, sir.
Okay, well, I mean, I know that's happening in other places. It might not be happening here yet, but I know that more and more AI is being used. And, you know, I have, I personally have went to colleges and recommended taking trees down for insurability.
Right.
So, I mean, I could see where people could get caught, the point of the two, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, I understand, and we'll be happy to take a look at anybody who runs into that situation and help them through that, absolutely.
Follow-up on this?
Yes. Matt, in that scenario that he just mentioned, let's say it's, the tree is definitely dead. So it's no problem getting the permit. Potentially, they would have to plant a tree, though, depending on what's on their property, correct? In lieu of the one they took down?
You don't necessarily have to plant back in lieu of a tree that, a dead tree that's being removed. It does allow a tree to be removed. Yeah, and I don't see a section in here that requires it to be, you know, replanted in that instance, especially if it's a dead tree, that tree's not very productive already.
The language that came to my mind, I don't know that I've found it right this second, but it was a section where it was referencing the one-year warranty.
That's under a development scenario, that's separate from individual property owner that needs to remove a tree because it's dead versus a development. If you're developing a piece of property and you're submitting a tree and vegetation list, one of those trees is required to meet your minimum DBH, it passes away in that one-year health check, then in that instance, yes, you would be required to replace it to meet the minimum DBH requirements. But if I'm just a property owner, I haven't pulled a permit in the last year and haven't had to submit a tree and vegetation plan, and I've just got a tree that maybe got struck by lightning in a storm and now is dead and I need to remove it, then no, we don't require that to be replaced. It's only in the development scenario that we require it to be replaced.
With reading that section, to me, it was a little confusing because that's the way, the way you just stated is the way I thought it was. But in reading that section, I kind of got the feeling, well, maybe here's a better example. The, it's new development in the tree was preserved, but it's been struck by lightning and I applied for a permit to have it removed because the tree is now dead.
If you, if as a result of removing that tree, you fall below the minimum DBH requirements in that scenario, then yes, we were required to be restocked, yes, sir.
Okay.
Very good. Board, we have a task set before us for town council to review this and give them recommendations. We do want to make this as manageable and attainable for the homeowners to achieve, while at the same time preserving trees. The main thrust of this should be preserving existing trees. And that's what we've all attained to do over the past three to four years of the different renderings of this ordinance. So with that, the first topic on paragraph one is DBH per square foot. We have the current 220, staff updated recommendations for new development to stay at 220. We've got recommendations from the different groups, tree piece, environmental advisory committee, and their recommendations, and then we have what we put forth to town council at 300. And I will say during the initial stakeholder meetings that we performed before the current ordinance was placed, we did come to 300 as the DBH, we felt that was fair, attainable, and it wasn't on the homeowners or the lots to achieve that recommended 300 per DBH. So with that said, can I get some feedback, let's, can I get a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion to
All right, thank you. Barbara, what's your feelings, your viewpoints?
Well, I know, what was it, like a year and a half ago when this was originally written? And I believe the stakeholders, they came up with the 1 DBH per 300 at first. But then, through discussions and input and so forth, I think it was then changed, right, to 200, 220, I believe.
That was changed at town council?
At town council, okay, okay. I, myself, I agree with what I've heard from everybody here saying, you know, let's not, let's not decrease the canopy, let's continue to increase it or keep it the same. So I don't know if changing it to 300, I know that we had So I don't know if changing it to three hundred, I know that we had a decision that we were talking about that it would be easier, that was consistent all along, you know, for everybody. But, um, I, I do have a concern about the three hundred.
I was in the discussions on all of it, all the way from the beginning and originally we settled on three hundred and I'm good with three hundred and. I like leaving it at three hundred. It's kind of my idea.
Reese? I wouldn't want to see it any less than three hundred. Three hundred's a fine, fine figure for me.
Mark? I, I would support sticking with the three hundred as well.
And the environmental advisory committee wanted two sixty. The current one is two twenty. Is there a way to go to two sixty instead of? The three hundred, it's enough that if you do a math, the math, I mean, there's.
A math that goes from fifteen at two twenty. The thirteen.
Bust out a calculator for. That's not an even number.
No, it's not an even number.
No.
Uh, so it would go down from thirty DBH to twenty-five DBH.
Yeah.
Uh, and then one per three hundred would be twenty-two DBH.
Thirty, twenty-five.
I can't even learn to turn this thing off.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Three hundred is twenty-two DBH on a sixty-six hundred square foot lot.
Okay.
One sixty-six hundred square foot lot divided by two sixty. Is twenty-five point three. And then a sixty-six hundred square foot lot divided by three hundred is, oh, twenty-two.
Sorry about that, I haven't learned to turn that thing off yet.
Oh, yes. Durl. Can, can we hear you? We cannot. You're muted, Durl.
Now, does he mute himself or is it in there?
I didn't.
It's gonna be him. I can check my mic.
We, we have some technical issues.
I was thinking Durl never sounded so better.
Well, clearly he can hear you.
Think that may be on our side. It's our end. It's your end, check your computer.
Yeah, he's not muted.
Oh, it's catching your headphones.
It's got your headphones.
Don't have headphones out.
There you go.
We can hear you.
There you are.
Okay, all right, um, I have been able to hear except for just a little bit there. I want to go back for context, just so folks understand why this came in front of the planning board. At the last. I guess two meetings ago, staff came to us with their recommendation. That for current residences that have been built, that we move their standard from one and two twenty. One DBH per two hundred and twenty square feet to one DBH for four hundred square feet. So that is the proposal that staff brought to planning board. Two meetings ago and that from that and with other, with the other changes that staff, uh, recommended. So I, I just want to, I want everyone to at least understand, we're taking this up and we looked at a three hundred number. Because we felt that one number applied across the, the town was a more fair way of applying this ordinance. Than having piecemeal and pockets, uh, especially when the majority of our town is already developed, it already has. Home on it and therefore we were basically having standard or a current resident and that, I believe, came up.
Rose up.
Reese up?
Yes.
Okay, keep talking, I'm sorry, the picture's a horrible picture, um, you guys can look. That, that is the context by which this whole thing came up. So now three hundred was our decision to apply one standard uniformly across all residents. Not trying to create pockets on, in, in the town that have a higher standard than others and others that have a lower standard. When that just seemed to be a little bit more, um, disparate. I am, um, I'm clearly within the two sixty to three hundred. I, I, I feel that three hundred is a fair number, uh, after having spoken with the EAC, I do understand, um, the two sixty. But, but to me, I think a three hundred number, if, if four hundred was the number that development services felt was needed. To allow homes to be able to do somewhat modest additions or additions to their homes. I, I really feel like we should not be discouraging or limiting somebody from being able to build out their building envelope if that's what they want to do. And, and that is my overall. Watching, so I, I guess I would probably rest at three hundred. As a uniform standard across the island. Excuse me, across the town, not the island, but the town itself. I, I will say too, we were asked about the rationale and when we reached out to try and figure out sort of the rationale for three hundred. That is when we discovered that the recommendation that the stakeholder group and the last, the, the planning board meeting that was actually chaired by one of the town council members now. The recommendation that went to town council from. Um, the stakeholder group and that planning board was one in three hundred. So from a rationale perspective, we felt we were going back to the original recommendation of the plant, of that planning board that had spent so much time. And that stakeholders group that had also spent so much time reviewing this. Reviewing this formula, if you will.
Very good.
Did you get any of that? Okay.
Do we have any other, uh, discussion topics? So on the first. New development, existing residents. Commercial, off-island. And we did not bring up special exemptions, i.e. duplex, triplex and condos. And that topic came up as far as like some of the condos that we have. How do we handle that situation if they decided to either expand a unit or build something on the property? Matt?
Yeah, so I can speak to that a little bit. Typically, when you have a, a multifamily site, like you're talking about duplexes, quads, townhouses, things like that. The, the DBH that's retained is taken on, on a site basis, so like if you have an apartment building, that's on one parcel of land, right? So when it comes in for development review, we, we review the whole thing, right? We look at it and say, okay, it's on your site that you're developing, we take the square footage, figure out the DBH and figure out how much, uh, DBH you're supposed to have on site. A lot of them do have pretty big natural wooded areas that they're retaining on site. They have landscaping requirements for buffering, for, uh, parking lot landscaping. Sometimes a street yard buffer requirement. So it, it is, uh, pretty simple in, in a lot of those instances where we're seeing like a town home or a multi-family style development to, to be able to meet their, their, you know. Development's DBH requirements.
So it shouldn't be an issue?
Uh, no, we, we've been able to work through it, um, on several sites here, including some commercial sites, uh, in, in the town, so, yes, sir.
Yeah, hey, and David, I believe the bigger issue were, again, in looking at South Harbor, which many of those homes, not many. There are several sections of South Harbor where there are cluster homes, where there may be two, three, four homes sort of connected. In those situations, they have a very, very, very front, front yard, a very narrow front yard. They have no middle, I mean, no sides yards because they're connected units, the two on the end would obviously have them. And then in the back, uh, you also, that's really your only space. So again, I don't know that we can cover exceptions, Matt and I did talk about this and what Matt had. Mentioned on the phone with me was, we can come back and look at for homes or developments or what have you. That would need an exception, what are some added things that we could give to the board of adjustment that would be more specific to this ordinance? That would then allow the board of adjustments to grant appropriate. Or variances in the case where a home is configured and, and we don't know what the future of the island build out is going to be and, and so it just gives us the ability. To, to look at one-off situations when they come up, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, it's a, a good point, um, you know, the, the current ordinance require, or, yeah, requires any variance to go through the board of adjustment. Subject to the findings of facts that are in the UDO, right? So that, that's what you would typically apply to like subdivision zoning requirements, things like that. You know, the, with the statutory, uh, language about a, uh, variances, that's specific to zoning. Like that type of development regulation, should the board want to examine, you know, whether there's a different set of criteria or exception criteria? That the board of adjustment could take into consideration separate from that. That's something, uh, we can research on our end, but we, we'd have to take a little bit of time to kind of craft those ordinances and put those together. There's not like a blanket one size fits all in that instance, but definitely something we can look into. And if the board wants to, uh, make some, uh, requests from staff to go ahead and draft that and that we recommend that. I mean, frankly, we can probably, it might not be in November, but we can go ahead and work on that and, and take it to council with your recommendation.
If you would do that, that I think will solve some of the special.
Our request that you, like I said, with everything we're talking about, let's, let's take a vote, so.
Okay. Can I have a motion to vote, a motion for section one?
I make a motion, we make them all three hundred square, one DBH per three hundred square feet, like we recommended on nine eighteen twenty-five.
I second that.
All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, uh, down to number two.
But do you have to make a motion?
Did y'all want to make a motion on?
Oh.
Asking staff to draft some.
Yes, can I have a motion to ask staff to draft up the recommendations for the, uh, board of adjustments for, uh, unique, uh, circumstances?
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Those two are done. Down to, uh, factors impacting meeting DBH requirements. All right, we all see in front of us the recommendations, uh, currently we have in chapter thirty-two. Newly planted trees at two DBH, existing preserved trees at five DBH. Staff has come back with a recommendation of two for newly planted, three for. Existing and one for newly planted understory trees. Environmental advisory committee has two, uh, preserved or existing two or three. And Margaret, can I get your confirmation on that, please? Yes, thank you, and then one for newly planted understory trees. Is there a discussion, any concerns on these, Gene?
Okay, a newly planted tree, we'll give, we'll count it at two. But if a tree is there, we want to count, it don't count unless it's three. Just like the gentleman said, you know, it's better to leave a two-inch tree than it is to plant a two-inch tree. So why wouldn't we have the newly planted trees at two, the existing preserved large trees at two? And the newly planted understory tree go with staff at one? I mean, that's kind of what I was thinking.
That's.
And at one point, it was for existing trees, two inches. In twenty twenty-four, when this ordinance was updated, the, the concern was that, uh, some very not healthy trees that were, you know, two inches in DBH were being preserved. So that's where the recommendation came to make it have to be a little bit more robust to count. I just wanted to provide some context for that and where we landed on the, the five number, but, you know, certainly if, if five's not, not right or not working, you know.
Matt, Matt, can I ask you a question on that? One, um, this determination, for the most part, is this happening prior to, this is happening when you're doing. Getting the, the, the land ready for construction, correct?
Yeah, they have to submit their tree and vegetation sheet and show their trees that they're counting towards their DBH and staff goes out and verifies, uh, the trees.
Okay, all right, so, okay, so, so the determination of whether it's two or three for an existing. That, that determination is made as far as what meets whatever standard at the beginning of the development, then the home is built. So we're talking several months, maybe even as much as a year for a home to be built. But then, once the certificate of occupancy is issued to the resident, they then have to maintain those trees for a year, correct?
Yes, sir.
So really, a two-inch DBH, if, and just for the, the audience, and you can all sort of, uh, look. For less mature specimens of live oaks, cause we all love the live oaks and I think that's what we're really wanting to preserve above all. Is, um, for a less mature, which is anywhere from, I've seen twelve all the way up to fifteen, anything smaller from twelve to fifteen, and the gentleman is here. He could probably verify from his perspective, um, they grow on average a year, twelve to twenty-four inches in height. And they can go anywhere from one to two inches in DBH per year for us, for a younger, less mature tree. So going back now, Matt, to this example, if the determination is happening at the point of the lot clearing. Then you're building the lot, let's just say it's seven months, and then you've got to maintain that tree. You've got a couple of other checkpoints there to make sure that the health. Of the tree is not the issue, because if the tree dies at any point in time, it has to be replaced then with a new tree, correct?
That's, if in that one year period, yes, sir.
Well, it would be during the development.
Yeah.
So if you lose the tree during development, then you gotta replace it with a two inch. Sorry?
Yeah, during the development, if you're counting that tree and it dies during the development or if it dies in the year after the CO has been issued, that's right.
So you're doing a DBH read at the beginning, then you, the, the owner gives you a site plan that shows you how they're adding trees to get to the required DBH by the end of construction. And then, so an existing tree now has at least a year and a half, probably, maybe even more. If it's gonna live, it's gonna live and probably be a three or three and a half inch tree and I'm, I, I'll, I'll let that just be a range. I, I'm just saying, I think there's more time, it, you know, we're look, we're trying to look at all this as a point in time, but for a newly, for a new construction. You've got probably eighteen months at a minimum that that tree's gonna continue to grow. And if it dies in any period, it has to be replaced in order to meet the total DBH requirement. Is that accurate?
Correct. Yes. So can I have a motion on, oh, Reese, can you comment?
I'm good with the. What we had before.
Okay. So you're going with existing at three?
Yeah, existing at three.
Mark, what would?
I would support the, uh, two, two and one.
Okay, Gene?
I'm good with two, two, one.
Barbara?
Just. The existing preserved large trees.
Yes.
Originally, the stakeholders came up with a five inch DBH. Matt, was that because, that what you were saying, because they've just been there and you were?
Yeah, I think, uh, the, the feedback that I recall from that was that, um. Some trees that were being counted were, were not the healthiest specimens of trees on lots, so that in the end, they were, they were dying. That being said, we've got the, that was before the one-year health provision where they have to be maintained and healthy at that one-year mark. So like, uh, Mr. Gilbert is saying, some, some safety is built into that now where it, it's not just a, you know, a very unhealthy twig. That's being counted and then dies shortly thereafter. thereafter. Yeah.
Okay.
So we put the security of it being maintained for a year in.
So that's why you can, okay, now that makes sense to me.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go with the two, two, and one. I'll second.
Second. All in favor? Reese, did you say affirmative?
Yeah, I'll change it to two. That's where you want to go. Make it unanimous.
Make it unanimous. And you can mark in your boxes right there what we picked. Okay, down to understory trees, areas of D B H requirements. Understory trees, staff did not, the current chapter 32 does not have maximum allowed with no buy-in. And areas of D B H requirement, right now, beachfront, second row.
Wait.
Yes.
Are we, hang on, hang on, real quick, are we going to look at the, just the understory tree first, or are you wanting to lump a few of these together?
Well, this is all one big section. Let's look at understory trees first, then we'll go to number three, number four, number five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
We're on two A and B.
We are on two A and B, yes. Updated staff recommendation is one-third of required D B H for, no, for, to be allowed for buy-in.
Yeah, so is, let's say you do a fee, we have a fee in lieu, 30% of the total D B H. What this proposes is for basically any scenario, whether you're doing a fee in lieu or not, you can count a third of your D B H with the understory tree, as opposed to having it be all large trees. So whether you're doing a fee in lieu or not, you still get that one-third ability to count understory trees. I think that's.
Who does not understand that part of it? Are we all?
I understand that. I guess my question is, why did the current, the, why doesn't the current one have anything about understory trees? What was their reasoning behind it?
There was no discussion. At that time, they had a two-inch minimum D B H, understory trees are less than that, so it's a one-inch. So that wasn't even a topic back when we took this up previous. And it looks like everyone's in alignment on allowing one-third of the understory trees to be counted toward D B H. We have any?
I'll put that into a motion.
Can you put that into a motion?
Sure. So I make a motion that we allow for one-third of required D B H on the buy-down with understory trees.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. All right, areas of D B H requirement, currently under chapter 32, beachfront, second front, second row are.
Exempt.
Exempt. But from third row back is not. During our past meeting, we included third row from southeast, southwest, 40th to Kings Lynn.
Could have been 40th, south.
40th, southwest, east.
Southeast.
Southeast, down to the west end.
It's a tongue twister.
It's a tongue twister, man.
40th Street, going west.
Start here and go there.
Yes.
Jeez Louise.
We sent that on, and it looks like we are in general alignment. Do we have any concerns or questions on that aspect?
Again, I guess, can I just ask, because I just, staff said no.
Yeah.
And stakeholders, original stakeholders said no. So I'm just, I just was wondering.
Yeah, the topic come up because of the viability in that section of the island. It's very, very hard to get vegetation to grow because of the salt tolerance, the wind. It's just totally different than on the other side of the Davis Canal and from 40, 41st southeast up to Long Beach.
Okay.
Yeah, and that just wasn't a part of the original staff recommendation. But that being said, as Chairman Bradley mentioned, you know, it was kind of a big step, even in 2024, to expand it, just from the, for many, many years, it was just the beachfront that was exempt. And we saw a lot of trees get planted that didn't make it in the end. So in 2024, it was, hey, let's expand it to the second row and kind of see how that works and evaluate the environment further from there. But, you know, the, the conditions are pretty similar, as, as you mentioned, from 40th, you know, down to the west end, even on the third row, there, there's not much tree growth there. You see a lot of shrubs, you know, herbaceous vegetation, things like that.
Can I have a motion on this portion?
I make a motion that we, for number three, that all beachfront, second row, third row, from 40th Street, southeast to the west end, being included in that exemption.
I'll second that. All right, all in favor? That is unanimous.
And David, can I just chime in to, just so people don't misunderstand this one? The only thing that is excluded here from these three is the presence of trees. There is still a D B H requirement and a vegetation requirement, because we still have stormwater issues. Matt, I would love to see staff come back and actually talk about palm trees, because I do think that's another thing that can help with stormwater issues. But I just want people to understand, there is still a requirement here for vegetation, bushes, you can count a D B H on, you know, on bushes, but it's just the trees, because the trees end up really not being the one that survives. Other things can absolutely survive to help with their stormwater erosion issues and things like that.
Thank you for the clarification. Number four, existing trees included in D B H. We are now looking at, the current chapter 32 does not include front, front row of the property, side property lines or back property lines, and spacing, okay, that's number five. Updated staff recommendations is yes on all three. Yes on the environmental advisory committee, and our last recommendation was yes, yes, and no. And I think with further discussion, I would be in favor of yes for all three. We saw on Matt's presentation how the back property line was valuable in getting the area to flat trees. Do we have any discussion, concerns?
I don't. I'd make a motion, we go yes with all three on number four then. I'll second that.
All in favor? Reese?
Yeah.
Thank you. Unanimous, thank you. Spacing of newly planted trees, this is going to be a little bit different than what we currently have. Currently is 10 feet, and with some very good input, we have been informed that going down to either three or zero is viable. What would your?
Oh, I definitely think three feet or none, or no spacing.
I had to answer what happened the last time. I remember that one. Mine are clustered. I mean.
They survive better.
Three feet, I mean, I don't know if, if it should be three feet or no feet. I mean, I don't.
Could we just take the spacing out?
I think that would be fine.
Take the spacing out altogether.
I'm good with taking it out.
Reese?
The experts have said so.
Yeah. Better go with no spacing as long as the D B H is met.
Yeah. The D B H will be met, but it'll be no spacing. That will be a big assistance all the way around.
And, and let me just say too, this is probably from anecdotal feedback that I've gotten, this is probably one of the reasons why trees that are established, just not of a larger D B H, are being cut down, because they only count towards D B H if they're 10 feet apart. And so if you have a cluster, people are going in and they're keeping the stronger tree, or the bigger tree, excuse me, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's stronger, but they're cutting all the other ones down because they don't get credit for them. And so I feel like this is a big one that's going to, you know, encourage people to not cut down established trees. They may not be five inches in diameter, but they are going to be in, in a few years. And I feel like this is one that's going to go a long way to helping folks retain trees.
Can I have a motion on?
I make a motion, we do away, have no spacing requirement for the trees. A second.
All in favor?
Can I get a clarification there?
Yes.
Because our spacing is required not just from other trees, but also the structure itself. So a little bit of a different issue there. Do you want to keep, remove the spacing between trees and keep the spacing from the structure, or whether there's?
Keep the spacing from structure, we cut the spacing for trees.
Can you remake your motion?
Okay.
So that's clear, sorry.
I make a motion that we keep the spacing from the structure as is, and do away with the spacing for trees.
Correct.
Newly planted trees.
Thank you. All in favor? That is good. I think that will be the biggest help. Fines for tree death and on properties owners and contractors. We've got none currently. Updated staff recommendation is 500 and 500. And a little back note on this, we put $1,000 lifetime, but we have found out that court decisions and has been very challenging.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not been good on excessive fines, so we want to try to be within that window and be good, standard with most other communities. So we went back to the 500.
And is a 500, 500, 500 for the owners and the 500 for the builders?
From my understanding, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's up to 500 for the, it's up to 500 for the resident, and then it's 500 for the contractor if a contractor is involved.
Okay.
And, and just for everyone too, 500 has been tested and seems to be upheld in court as a reasonable fine.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we change the fine, well, yeah, change the fine to 500 for property owners and 500 for contractors for number six.
Thank you.
Can I ask a friend, can I ask a friendly amendment?
Yes.
I think the current says up to 500 for the resident, and I think that determination is based on size of the tree, circumstances, things like that. I don't know if you want to make it a hard 500, Gene, or if you want to stay with the language as written, up to 500.
Well, I'm good with staying with the language, up to 500 for the contractor.
Okay, so we state the motion to.
I make a motion that we, the fines on number six be up to $500 for the owner and up to $500 to the contractor.
Thank you. Second. All in favor? All right, unanimous. Number seven, D B H required in front setback per 25 linear feet. Currently, we have four D B H for 25 feet front. Updated staff is two D B H for 25. The environmental advisory committee is two D B H 25, and we sent two D B H 25 to the town council lifetime. I think this should be, I'll make the motion on this, that we maintain the two D B H 25 linear feet.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
All in favor? Commercial. This is new development, total, total price per square footage, new development, current chapter 32 is non, updated staff recommendation is 80, and across the board has been 80. B, total price per footage, trees maximum is 10,000 across the board. So I'll say we just maintain.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this for not having trees? They get, they, they have to pay this money for not having trees?
Yeah, so this is geared, this is specific towards the C B zoning district, so that's the commercial zoning district here on the island.
On the island, okay.
Those are largely built out. We've got a streetscape master plan that calls for street trees on those properties. As I mentioned earlier, we've got a street yard, like parking lot, buffer yard landscaping requirements. So in lieu of them having to meet chapter 32, they still have to meet all their U D O landscaping requirements, but in lieu of chapter 32, they, they would pay essentially a full fee in lieu based on their linear frontage, and that would fund streetscape or tree improvements along those streetscapes where we've got the master plan laid out there. So kind of a way to give them some relief where the, most of those lots are very largely built out, and then, you know, fund our landscaping improvements in the right of way as well.
Okay. Gene, can I add one other thing? David is correct that it is for new development, but it also covers any development on existing C B property over $50,000, I believe. So if anyone that's currently got a building is doing more than $50,000 worth of enhancements, then this kicks in for them as well.
Okay.
Motion?
I make a motion on the commercial section that we do 80 for a linear price per footage and maximum, total price paid maximum at 10,000.
For improvements of $50,000 or more.
With improvements of 50,000.
With improvements of $50,000 or more. My bad.
Can I ask?
That's all right.
Is there a reason why the original current chapter, the current 32, it doesn't have anything? I mean, was there reasoning behind that?
It wasn't thought of at the time. Since then, the, the town has started up a, a commercial code repair provision, and part of that was looking at the landscaping requirements in commercial developments. Since these, you know, properties are so tight and they already have so many landscaping requirements, this was kind of a creative way to, to still get some canopy and to get those streetscape improvements while giving some of those properties a little bit of relief. I mean, those, those commercial properties are basically one row deep, and then you're on the next lot. So there's, really where they're highly improved, there, there's not a lot of room to actually plant trees.
And did I have a second on that?
No, second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Approval of native plant list. This will be some new ones on the current chapter 232, crate, large crepe myrtles on the understory list. Currently, crepe myrtles are not on the list, and then B would be inclusion of dwarf crepe myrtles on the bush list, and I want to make a differential on this. The bush list is only on the oceanfront, second row, and what would be included on third row is only place these trees would count. They would not count on the other side of the Davis Canal. So it would be limited to like southeast, 40th, down to Kings Lynn on the beach side under the bush list.
Again, the, the current says no, and?
So currently newly planted crepe myrtles, no. There was a challenge with the, with the ordinance as it is right now to even count an existing crepe myrtle. A lot of crepe, so D B H is measured at about four and a half feet off the ground. A lot of crepe. A lot of crepe myrtles, they tend to ranch out way before you even get to four and a half feet off the ground. So while the exist, while any existing species can count, it has to have that minimum DBH in order to count. So where you couldn't measure that, it was kind of like, well, we can't really, there's no way to count this. That being said, as I mentioned in my presentation, we've got some instruction on how to actually measure those now going forward. So we've kind of bridged that hurdle of, you know, hey, if it's an existing crepe myrtle and it can meet whatever minimum DBH we threshold this board and town council ends up adopting, whether it's 5, 3, 2, you know, whatever, then we can't count those. So, you know, they do seem like they thrive here a bit in some parts of town. So, you know, we don't have any objection per the staff recommendation towards, towards counting them.
So, and I'm sorry, the gentleman that spoke earlier, yes. So do you have any input on, I mean, is, can we ask him one more time about that?
Yes, by all means. This is.
That's why we asked him to come.
We're not paying for this, by the way.
You know, the crepe myrtles are one of the plant, they're not native in this area, just to be clear about that. And just to compare, City of Wilmington and their district, we're matching 55 city limits. They did a tree canopy survey and they found a really high amount. I think it was something north of like 35, almost 45% of the tree canopy, even higher was crepe myrtle. And that was becoming an issue because they were all kind of aging out at the same time. And we started to see some new pest pressures where in the past, largely because this is an aging tree, it didn't have a lot of pest pressures. But now we're seeing an insect called crepe myrtle bark scale. And then there's a couple of other things that are starting to, to attack that crepe myrtle. So all that to say, diversification of your canopy is going to be the most resilient approach. People love their crepe myrtles and they're great trees. Go ahead and grow them. Just know that they are not native. So just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me add also to this, because I know we're talking about crepe myrtles, but I believe that Bryce has worked with the EAC, probably even gotten feedback from Tree Piece, because I know he's connected with. But to try and, originally the list that was approved were native species as the gentleman sort of alluded to a minute ago. What's happened is, I guess sometimes the native species are not available. Could be limited supply. If everybody's trying to put in all the same trees, it can sometimes, you can have price pressures on those. So this list, as I understand it, Matt, is actually native species to North Carolina, but that do survive in our climate.
Correct.
So it is an expansion of locally native plants to North Carolina native plants. Correct? Go ahead.
Correct, yes. Everything on, on the list that I provided is native. And it's, and like I said, it's not comprehensive. It is species specifically selected that, that should do better in suburban and urban landscapes in southeastern North Carolina. But again, look at, look at your soil type too, because that, you know, right plant, right place is something we're always promoting, so.
Yep. So while we're talking about crepe myrtles, what I don't, and we may want a separate motion or we can include it in one, David, when you get to that. The updated native, I mean, the updated tree list and shrub list, also grasses for first, second and third, that is in the document as well. And I know that Bryce has worked with, again, the EAC and I believe Tree Piece as well, to get their input and that reflects their input. So there are more trees added and more understory trees and more bushes added than just crepe myrtles. But crepe myrtle was the one that was a little contentious and now I think we've gotten everybody on board that crepe myrtles. And also let's always remember, these, the crepe myrtle would be an understory tree, even though it's technically not, it would be classified as an understory tree and you can only use a third. I don't know that everyone's just going to stay with the crepe myrtle because there are other, you know, magnolias and other things like that that are on that list as well.
And again, to reiterate, that would be the understory trees. So you could only plant up to one third of the lot.
DBH.
You couldn't use all crepe myrtles to get your credits, just one third.
Correct.
Any?
Okay.
Let's have a discussion on this.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Can I have somebody motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Okay, Barbara.
So I'm just, the environmental advisory committee also says no on the crepe myrtle for the brush list. Is she still here? Can she tell us?
Margaret, can you comment on this for us? This is a?
I've heard folks will comment on this very.
Up here too. On the crepe myrtle, the environmental?
Advisory committee.
Advisory committee has said no on this.
You gotta be careful with Mary now. You gotta be careful with Mary.
Be careful.
Listen to the man behind that computer.
Go ahead, Mary, I'm just kidding.
So our, our recommendations were we, we were okay with the tree, but said no to the bush is what? That is your question, that's what, despite the fact, as it was already clearly said, they are not native trees. But they are pervasive and people love them, so.
Yes.
So you're saying no because they're not native for the?
The dwarf.
For the dwarf?
For the dwarf, yes.
Okay. Okay.
On the staff report, we got yes on both for staff. Environmental, we've got a no and it's up to us to decide and debate the merits of each.
Tree Piece said yes for both.
Barbara, what's your?
Yeah.
Yes.
Tree Piece was, and to, I spoke with Tree? Originally said no to crepe myrtles and part of the reason for their no was that myrtles would, of them being dwarf, that they did not feel that that would count as understory. When we went back and they clarified it and said we would be okay with dwarf as long as that's a bush, the non-dwarf can go into understory. So I think that was how they, their perspective.
Gene?
I'm good, I'm good with including them, the large crepe myrtles as an understory tree and including the dwarf as a bush.
And can I just ask the staff, that's Bryce, Bryce says yes, he's, okay. Okay. So if we've got yes, yes and yes.
I would support yes to both. And I know the different groups aren't 100% in agreement, but I think the majority feel like it should be and I would recommend to say yes.
Can I have a motion on this section?
I'll make a motion that we include large crepe myrtles as an understory tree and an inclusion of dwarf crepe myrtles as a bush.
Thank you. Second. All in favor? I did not see Dural.
He's frozen. He's good.
Since I did not see, he will be a non-vote on that issue. So it'd be five approve and one non-vote. Thank you. He's froze up.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, we cannot see you. Now, now.
He gone.
He gone. Okay.
Deny, deny. Don't let him in.
With that, that finished?
Were there a few other items on your last?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know I threw a few options in front of you that weren't necessarily in this, this breakdown that Mr. Gilbert had put together for us. I didn't want to, wanted to make sure we were good with what we got before we adjourn. Was there anything that I talked about otherwise that was of interest to the board? Whether?
Actually?
Dural, go ahead.
Sorry about that. And I froze up there, guys, so I would have been a yes on that last vote. I do apologize, my camera, I mean, my thing. Natives, I mean of, of species, took this into consideration. So if it did, just tell me and I'll be quiet. I just want to make sure that list in the packet, page 80 and 81 of the packet. I don't believe that reflects the most up to date because when I spoke with Bryce yesterday, and I know Bryce yesterday had conversations with the EAC as well, there were, I believe, some changes to this. And so I'm not sure it's up to date, but at some point, we need to approve this amended species list as well to go to town council. And Matt, I don't know how best to do that, given that I don't think what he sent out Monday for us was reflective of conversations that he has had. Because, for example, crepe myrtle is not on the list either as an understory tree or what have you. So again, I'm just, we've added it through amendment. We've still got to deal with the other plants that he has added as well.
Frankly, I don't know how to handle that with the board because I don't have it in front of you guys to vote on. It's not including yours in the packet.
It would be in the packet.
Well, this board can't vote on a list that doesn't exist in front of anyone yet. So that's a little bit of a tough one if that list is still being revised.
Okay.
The planning board is voting on it.
If that list is still being revised, we did vote for the crepe myrtle section. Can we have at the next meeting, an actual list for us to review and vote on for that?
Could, but we'd have to have another, I mean, it would be a separate public hearing for town council all over again and things like that. You could.
What list are we going to use? This one here plus?
There's one that's in your red line that was your, part of Bryce's and your original recommendation. You've added crepe myrtles onto that list. If, if from what we've got in front of you, if you wanted to add some of the large, medium and understory trees that were provided by the cooperative extension, you know, you could, since you have those in front of you, you could vote on, hey, we'd like to add anything that's not on our list from this cooperative extension list for larger understory trees, we can add those as well. But I just, without the one that Bryce is apparently updating in front of us, it's kind of tough to vote on that without.
Okay, so we can take the, the list and add it to this list and vote, pass both lists on the town council.
You could. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I will make a motion that we use the list the cooperative extension agency has provided along with this list to make one master list to pass on to town council for their approval.
Can I second that?
All in favor?
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. That motion is done. So now you have one master list from the two list.
Yes, sir.
The one.
Was there any other topics that the board wanted to address? I know we talked about and we heard some comments on, you know, when we're expanding the footprint or adding impervious surface and we've talked a little bit about fee in lieu, some things that were in your packet. If not, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure we had covered everything.
I think with the changes we've made today, we're good. I want to hear town council's viewpoints and discussion. Thank everyone for showing up today. This has been a lot of time intensive work. There will probably be more iterations as years come down to try to clarify. Matt, one question. Would it be feasible to put in the building permit like the size of lots, the DBH required and the breakdown of trees that would make up that DBH to make it clear and visual to the applicant?
We could certainly work on, you know, potentially some examples. One thing I worry about with our current development and building permit is if you've ever looked at one, it's many, many pages already, so the more we add to it. But we can definitely take a look at what options we have in order to, to make sure that's up to date. I know typically with a tree and vegetation worksheet, like the, the sample lot sizes, I believe, are on there as well as the DBHs or as well as like how much DBH you would need. So, but we can definitely look at updating the permit to whatever we can do to help people out.
Or at least put it in vegetation plan where they can see a visual of what we are looking for.
I did have one thing come up that Taylor just reminded me of and I apologize. This came up a little bit after your agenda packet was created. One challenge that we have in our ordinance and I kind of, it's one of those things that we think about when we think about the variability of a lot. The current ordinance doesn't allow anybody to plant basically in any easement, right? So like a lot of lots have a utility easement in the back. Now, from my experience, if you have BEMC or Duke Progress or anybody like that and you've got a tree in your easement, they don't care, they're gonna, they're gonna go in and take it down. So I wanted to see if there was any opportunity to, to allow some planting in some easements, knowing that, you know, if the utility needs to get in there, just like the town, if you, you plant something on top of a water line or sewer line, we're gonna get in there. But I just wanted to bridge that with you guys. Does expand the opportunities for planting. You know, when I showed you that example, a lot of the trees were on the back property line, right? Well, on many lots, there's actually a utility easement running along that back property line. If you can't plant in there, you're just bringing them all back closer to the house. So kind of doesn't help that spacing out. So I apologize for that not being in your packet, it came up a little bit after, but I did want to see whether the board wanted to consider allowing planting in the easement, in the utility easement.
How often, would that be an issue with the trees being damaged or?
Typically, I don't know that I've seen anybody have to actually like clear out one of those easements. I know they do exist along a lot of the rear property lines running north, south. I don't think it's all of them, but certainly many of them. But when you have that, that is eating up 10 feet of your property, basically, that you, you know, have to keep clearing and can't plant on. You know, just wanted to offer that up as another potential expansion option. But if you, if you haven't thought about it or don't.
Is it the utilities that would take down the tree?
Yeah, the utility comes in, yeah.
Then are you asking whether or not then the owner should have to?
No, just whether we can, whether we can allow, right now you can't plant in there. So it's basically taking up 10 foot of that backyard. The ordinance doesn't allow you to plant in it. If the board wanted to allow planting in there, it would give somebody, you know, 10 feet more space to plant. But we all know that if the utility comes in, they're, they're gonna come, you know, get access however they need to. I've sat with many a BEMC and Duke Progress people that say, if you put a fence across our easement or even if you put a structure in the easement and they need to tear it down, they're gonna tear it down. So did want to get some feedback on that and if the board feels comfortable making a motion on it.
My reservation would be how viable that would be long-term.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's my only thing. It's not a long-term solution. It's going to be cleared out eventually, five, 10 years. It's gonna be, something's gonna happen, they're gonna come in and it'll be gone.
Yeah, but we, we just expanded allowing them to count in the, in the back. And like on my house on 13th Street, in between all the houses is an easement in the back. And as far as I know, they've never come, and I've got an easement on the side and the back. And I don't, one, I don't know if they'll ever come through and do anything anyway. But, you know, planting in the easement, I'm, I don't know about that. Because that, I always thought you left them clear and?
I thought, I think we'll probably pass on that aspect. And one more, this is more of a clarification thing. We talked about planting in the frontage, right, along the street front. One thing that wasn't contemplated when this ordinance is written is that a corner lot has two street frontages, right? Well, the ordinance requires all of, you have to calculate all of the street frontage, but then you have to stock or plant all of them in the front setback area. Which doesn't make a whole lot of sense because you only have one front setback area. So that would be a very simple amendment to say. So that would be a very simple amendment to say in the setback areas along the frontages. So you would say, okay, you can plant some. If you got a corner lot, you can plant some in the front, you can plant some in the side.
So that needs to be clarified, correct?
Yeah. And so... It would be a very quick motion. We can fix that up in the ordinance very easily. Just a little caveat that came up.
It can be planted front and side.
On the front, on the side frontage. So the side that faces the street or the front that faces the street.
Yes. That's something we need to do.
A corner lot, you got a lot of frontage, and you're trying to jam them all into the...
Yeah. Into the front, that makes sense.
Okay. Can we get a motion to that? I apologize.
Wait. Matt, I'm sorry, Matt, I try...
Some of the best topics he's brought up in years.
Really?
Now you're back. Now you're back.
Oh, sorry. Matt, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I understand. So you're saying that the revision is going to be where it now says the linear foot is calculated off of both street fronts or both street sides. Now it would just be calculated on the front of the house?
No, it would be...
I see Taylor vehemently shaking her head.
It would be... It would still be calculated on the whole thing, but you could also plant along the whole thing. Right now, what it says is you calculate it based on the whole frontage, but you can only plant it in what's technically the front setback area. That doesn't include the side corner setback area.
This would add the side to be able to be planted.
Yeah.
Instead of clustering all the trees in the front, you could plant it along the side of the road on the other side that's counted.
Yeah.
The calculation.
It was a weird quirk when it got...
And but all of these... All of these count towards your total DBH.
They do, yes, sir.
Yes.
It's not an additive requirement. It's inclusive of the total DBH.
That's correct.
It just spreads them out instead of forcing the homeowner to plant them all in front.
Yeah.
So we'll make the motion on expanding.
You can just say, take a motion to take staff's recommendation on the...
There you go.
...frontage and front setback area plantings, and we'll get drafted up for it.
Doesn't work that way.
So we need to say the front setback on corner lots, the trees can be planted along the adjacent street and the front corner...
It would be in the front setback area and in the side, the street-side corner setback area.
To include the street-side setback area.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we just...
We include the side.
Hold on. I make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation in regards to clarifying...
What did you say?
...frontage on a corner lot.
The street frontage on a corner lot.
Yeah.
Is that good enough, Matt?
Yeah, we already know how to fix it. We've got to get some clarity on it from you guys.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you for that.
Yes. All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.